Good morning, everyone. It's 9:30 and I would call this open session of council for November 29th to order. And I would ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection. I would ask if we have any rise and report motions from in camera session?
Thank you, Warden Weaver. We have one matter to report on, and that's the fact that county council provided negotiation instructions to staff in regards to collective agreements that are expiring in 2018.
Thank you. We have a couple delegations this morning. I would ask for a motion to allow the delegations to come within the rail. Counselor McGugan, Counselor Deputy Warden McCharles. All in favor of that? That is carried. Thank you. Our first delegation is Heather Allen, and this is a staff person assigned to Accessibility Advisory Committee. So we'd ask, welcome you to come up and make your presentation, and following that, we will have some awards to... Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. It is my absolute pleasure to be here. As Warden Weaver said, I am Heather Allen, and I have the honour of staffing the Accessibility Committee for the County of Lampton. And because December 3rd is the International Day for Persons with Disabilities, our Accessibility Advisory Committee thought it to be a perfect time to come and talk to you a little bit about some of our accomplishments over the last few years. So thank you for letting us come. As I mentioned, December 3rd, which is coming up, because my birthday is Friday, so that's December 1st, so on Sunday is the International Day of Persons with Disabilities. And so I would like to thank Jay Van Klinken. He has been helping our committee. We're going to have some, an internet presence on December 3rd, talking about some of the accomplishments that we've had to date. These really are our key principles that we work through every day with any requests that we receive. It's all about inclusion. We want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to go wherever they want to go, with their family, with their friends, just like all of us do. So that's what we always have in mind when we are, like I say, looking at, if Public Works comes and asks us to look at an area of parkland where there's going to be some spaces for people to enjoy the outdoors. Also, publicly accessible buildings was really important to us, too. So for many of the county buildings, we now have wheelchairs that are available. So if you have somebody who's with you who doesn't need a wheelchair all the time, but it would be very helpful for them to have, then we have those available for people to use. So that was something very important to the group. We also support, as I mentioned, inclusion, which also leads to the independence of persons with disabilities. Like I say, everybody has the right. All individuals need to have the same opportunity to access services as those that don't have Wheelchairs are available at many County of Lampton facilities. We also, for those of you that aren't aware, we have publicly available charge stations that we partnered with the City of Sarnia, and we had a wonderful opportunity to get a grant from the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers, or an award, I mean, from the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCTO. So we're quite proud of that. And we have been able to remove about 350 barriers so far, which is quite exciting. I wanted to end off with a great picture of the charge stations. I believe Jay took that picture of all of us, and we all look fantastic, that's for sure. And when we, as I mentioned, we consult, so we've had... I want you to be able to read this, so I can be able to tell you exactly what it was. With the Public Works Department, there were upgrades on the trail. So it's actually the south side of Lake Shore, from the roundabout at Mandaman Road to Kamlackie. So this is owned by the county connecting to the City of Sarnia Howard Watson Trail. So our committee had the wonderful opportunity to consult with Public Works on that. And also, we consulted with Public Works on accessible parking in the township of Warwick. And we also consulted with the City of Sarnia Accessibility Advisory Committee for an additional parking spot downtown near the Judith and Norman Alecks Gallery. So thank you very much for letting us have a chance to tell you what this great group has been able to do over the last several years.
Thank you, Heather. Any questions from council? I know we have some presentations to make. Counselor Bradley.
If you're involved at all in disability employment. The unemployment rate for those who are disabled is worse than the Great Depression unemployment rate across the country. So I didn't know, you saw that as part of your mandate. The city itself has been successful, or was up to a couple of years ago, on students through community living. But I would say it hasn't made a lot of progress on full-time employees with disabilities. There are people with disabilities, but the disabilities often came after they were employed. So do you see that as part of your mandate for the county? And if so, how's that unfolding?
That's an excellent question. Even going back to December 3rd, which is the day that they're celebrating internationally, that's one of the main things that that whole movement is doing, is around employment. And of course, we have all our policies in place for the County of Lampton related to employment. So those are the kinds of things that we talk about at our committee meetings. Not that long ago, there was a whole thing, just specifically on people with sight impairments, and how you could very easily adapt someone's workplace or workspace to be able to work. And I know the people who are deaf and hard of hearing have been working on that, too. So it's a very important issue, that's for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I would call on those members of the committee that are here to meet up at the front for the presentation. Counselor Nopper, you have, you'd like to speak either now or through the presentation?
Oh, through the microphone.
Okay. So if we could, if you'd like to join us down at the front?
Thank you.
Right there is good, I think. We'll just come over this way a little bit. So Counselor Nopper, as Chair of this committee, you'd like to, you want to come around this way?
I guess on behalf of the Corporation of County of Lampton, we recognize the International Day of Persons with Disabilities and the accomplishments of the County Accessibility Advisory Committee with respect and sincere gratitude from the county. So I'll present that to... Who wants to do some... Give it to him?
Me. Wow, I didn't do nothing. Here, Jim, I'll let you hold.
Whoa. I don't think I need a microphone, do I? Put it that way, back here. It'll still get you.
Well, thank you very much for honoring us today. This is a fantastic committee, and I'm so pleased to be Chairman of it for the last few years. We have a lot of fun at the committee. And I just thought it was very important that we come out and introduce these folks to you. I don't look at them as members of a committee. I look at them as role models for our community. And I just thought, you know, you hear about this committee, but you never know who's on it. So I would just like to say a few words about each member here. Gord Dingell, he can't make it today, but Gord, he represents his side of parent people. He's quite involved with the community and gives us a lot of advice. But Luann Cameron, Luann there, you'll notice out front, she has her van parked there. She was able to drive out herself, and you go out there. Don't park your car next to her door, or you'll get to know her real well. Or don't be an architect coming in here telling you how the handicapped are. So she'll take you to task on that. She's very outspoken. And, but she's been a real good supporter of our group over the years. But the last place you'd think you'd find her on the weekend would be down at the roller derby. She's a big fan of the roller derby, very vocal, and she supports them and their grandchildren in there. And it's just amazing how she can, you know, be in a chair and get out moving around. The next member is Debbie Dragginis.
Right.
I got it. And she's a lawyer and is a community legal assistant. She was the recipient of the prestigious Accessibility with a Disabled Act 10th Anniversary champion. And she goes to work every day, and she's a great supporter, and she's on the Sarnia Advisory Committee, and it's just a real asset to the committee. And our next fellow is no stranger if you live in Detroit, Jim Stapleton. Jim's just recently taken up residence at Meadowview in one of our homes. But every day, you'll see Jim going into town with his chair, very active in the Lions Club. He'd be there selling tickets, and he gets out and stuff, and he keeps everybody on their toes. Jim, you never want to tell these people they got a disability, but if Jim's got one, he's a Tiger fan. And I haven't convinced him to be a Blue Jays fan yet. So they're just, I think they're the rock stars of the community. It shows that if our committee, I've been involved with, like, through my family, you all know, with wheelchairs and stuff like this, met a lot of families that have been thrown in that position. There's two ways you can go. You can either accept it and do the best you can in life, or you can go and crawl in the corner. Well, these folks here, I think as role models, have shown her, yes, you can get out there. But then it's up to every leader in Lampton County and us folks to make sure that they go out, they have a good experience. Because if anything I've ever learned, when you go out and you have one bad experience, you can't get in a washroom, you can't do this, that person will windowsill. I think these folks have just made more inroads for us. So I'd like to thank them, and I'd like to thank Heather Allen. She's our dynamic things. And one thing I want to say about this committee, they're not always agreeable with what the people come out for the handicapped. They'll come out with some idea that we should be regulating, and they'll say, that's great, you're talented. And they'll debate it for quite some time to give their opinion. So I admire them for that. But Heather Allen, she's our, keeps us on the straight and narrow, and she's been our great access... What's the word I'm using? Come on, help me out here. You're a legal lawyer.
[inaudible]
Yes. She's been great for us. Along with Stephon, who sits on our board, along with Ross King and Dog Ball. Can't say enough for county staff. We come up with recommendations, and they're done within a week or so. So it's, I think, we've made our municipality, I think we're years ahead of other groups. We go to seminars and stuff, and people are starting out where, you know, we're years ahead of them. So I just want to congratulate them. I just want to put a face to a committee, and I think this, this group here is probably... Sorry, I get emotional. One of the most rewarding group today to set off. Thank you.
Just to extend another thank you to Counselor Nopper for heading up that committee, and a sincere thanks to all the people that do the work on that committee, and a job well done. And I know you'll continue to, to do good things for Lampton County. I'd like to ask our second delegation to come forward, Pollinative Pathways, the Pollinator Gardens, and make a presentation. Georgina and Rick.
Georgia.
Georgia. If you just push the button, the light will come on, and the microphone is on, and...
Here we go.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rick Tush. I'm from Delaware. This is my daughter, Georgia. Work came up here, thank you for Mr. Bradley. He helped, he told us to come to the county meeting, because I wanted to come up and talk to him personally. I started about a year ago, I started a lot of things about a year ago, all right? I started questioning why things are done a certain way. The reason being is I, my son approached me, and he had a bee brick, all right? He was building, out of concrete. I said, what are you doing that for? He said, Dad, the bees are all dying. I said, why are the bees dying? He says, well, I guess there's not enough habitat. So I live in a farm just outside of Delaware, and I started looking around, and I said, well, why are all the bees dying? So I started looking around. I've been a Realtor for 30 years, selling farmland. And I know every square inch is turned into corn or beans, corn or beans, all right? The whole area. And that's, that's what we do, right? And I started looking around, and I said, well, I've got this little six-acre piece down below. How come we just don't turn that into habitat? And I made some inquiries, and I started thinking, you know, why are all the insects, what else is dying out there? And I found out, you know, that 70% of the insect population is missing. I don't know if you guys have, now, why don't you be a little aware when you're driving down the county roads, when you go home at night, just count how many bugs are on your car window. Not too many anymore. Remember, you used to have bug deflectors? They're gone. All right? Something's happening, folks. Without the insects, guess what? There's no birds. So I started checking this out. 70%. Now, why is there no habitat? I looked around, and I guess I found out that there's only 3% native grasses left in Ontario, southwest Ontario. 3%. So think of the oceans, you know, would there be any fish in the ocean if there was no coral reefs? All right? Think about a pollinative pasture or fields that plants that used to be here, those are the coral reefs, the nurseries for the insects. So if there's nothing left, all right, as far as the eye can see, it's a desert out there. So I said, okay, I'm going to start doing things on my own. And, you know, I started my own field, six acres, neighbors, then across in the Oaks, there are eight acres, 22 acres. We planted them. And I'm getting very passionate about this. And I said, wow, we can make a difference. And then I said, okay, let's, let's have a meeting, let's get, let's start a nonprofit. And let's say maybe we can maybe create a pollinator pathway, you know, across the province, you know, do a couple acres, you know, every, every thousand acre, every thousand acre block, which I sell farms. How about we put two acres towards a pollinator, you know, pasture? That's not much to ask. And then maybe we can get corporations to help sponsor and buy the seeds. And they went, yeah. So then I had a meeting, and I invited all the polit, all my MPPs and Beth Shipley, the lower Thames. I said, well, no, I got to get all the rest of these guys. I got involved with St. Williams. They're the guys who have all the native seeds for Ontario. And I got another friend, they've been doing all the work along the 407. So the people I got in hold of, you know, they've had 40 years of experience, you know, building these systems back up. I had a meeting, and I had all the different biologists, ecologists coming. We had a great meeting at my place about a month ago in my shop. And I said, and about to free press out, I said, this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to build a pathway across Ontario. Who's with me? And I had everybody speak, and you know what? Everybody said, you know what? Common sense has its own ring. And this is what I'm going to talk to you guys today about common sense. All right? We started this, we got our nonprofit status, we're registered as a bee preservation program. We're a nonprofit. We had a meeting about a month ago, and people are coming out of the woodwork. I talked to a developer, Mr. Farry, he said, hey. I said, Mr. Farry, you got all these properties, all right? You got your name on all of them. That's great, you know, but what's it really doing? How about if you, Mr. Farry, we had a pollinator park, a couple acres here or there on every one of these, you know, right? And you're giving back to the community, and we're starting to do something for society. He says, you know what? That's a great idea. I'm going to get behind this. Well, next thing you know, I got like 40 properties to do this, along the 400 streets. I got people calling me from Leamington, everywhere. And I'm building, so we built, so going back to my own place, I said, okay, I'm going to build barn swallow structures that's going to house the barn swallows and the bats. And we put them in place. From there, we have started working with all the different communities. I worked with Strathroy, with Joanne. She said, hey, listen, Rick, I got two acres to do a landfill site. Then I got ahold of Trevor and Woodstock, you know, Trevor Birch. He says, listen, I got 15 acres to do a landfill site there. Then I got ahold of Ducks Unlimited, and they said, yes, we could work perfectly together. You guys, you know, work, you know, what you guys do, what do you call that word? Work good together, because we're building the marshes, you guys are building the pollinator plants. And we're putting in 55 different types of plants that used to be here. Most have been eradicated. All right? So we put them back in, guess what? The insects will start coming back, the birds will start coming back, all right? It starts, it's just common sense. So what I'm going to be doing here, what am I looking for? I'm looking for some awareness here. I'm looking for everybody to start, when you drive home, count the amount of bugs on your windshield. I want you to think about all the fragmites, invasive species that are cluttering up all your ditches, all right? You go to the States, you know, in the States, you have to stabilize the roadways, the banks, before you can even build a roadway. I'm talking about renaturalizing it. Here in Ontario, I can throw any old crap down there, let it grow. And then you take a look in the 402 and everywhere you go, what's growing? Fragmites, invasive species. Guess what? Bugs can't live in fragmites. Nothing lives in fragmites. It kills everything. So we got to start doing something our own backyard. So what we're going to be doing is, and I'm going to have Georgia talk about the bees and the solitary bees and, and that part of it, what actually the bees are we doing. And we're actually looking at the bees, the species that are endangered, like 400 types of bees from Ontario. I am not going to go into all the 400 different types of bees, but what we're going to do is create some habitat for the bees, the birds, the insects, the monarch butterflies you're putting in the milkweed, all that kind of stuff, so.
Hello. So one of the things that I found out, one was interesting about the bees, was that we see the honeybees, the waffs, and all those different types. And those aren't even native to this area, they're actually from Europe. And the bees that are actually the ones that are really getting hit by the pollination crisis is these leaf cutter bees. And they're fantastic pollinators, just as good as the honeybees. And the honeybees, to make sense of it, they go into a flower, and they take the nectar, and they roll around it, and they get all sticky, and they bring it back to their hives. Whereas the leaf cutter bees, they go in there, and they jump into pollen, and their furry, and they get covered with all the pollen, and they fly. And the pollen falls off them and pollinates flowers all the way back up to their nests. And they actually travel way further than any other bee to get the pollen. And even when they're going into these little holes here, it falls off, and the wing catches it. And they're just amazing little pollinators. And the great thing about them is that they're not protecting a hive, they don't have honey, and they are not aggressive. So, you know, you could have these in your garden, and your kids are playing, and you don't have to worry about it. They, they're not protective, they're not trying to defend themselves. And, and they're just, they're just very interesting, and everyone knew what a leaf cutter bee was before this. We have another system, so this is what we'd like people in their backyards, people that want to make a change, just to do anything, is they could put these in their gardens and start helping pollinate in their own gardens, and, and starting to bring back habitat for a lot of the other bees. But this is another one we have, it's a bigger one, and these are what we're going to put in the fields. So this wafer system is the bees actually go in here, and they create like a cocoon. And what you can do in the fall is you can actually open them up and take these cocoons, put them in the fridge, and you can start another hive. And you just kind of let them fall out in the spring, you put the thaw out in the spring, and they go into the holes, and you start another hive. So it's a neat way that we can build the populations up and, and grow them. And we also, another big thing is European bees brought in pests and mites that actually are killing off bees. And what we can do and go in here and clean out the pests and the mites, and start controlling that invasive thing for the bees that are actually hurting them as well.
The proceeds, donate to pollinate, all right? That's what are going to be your slogan is. So percentage of all these bricks that are, you know, being, people purchase them, all right? They'd be like $40, and that includes a packet of wildflower seeds, so that you can create your own little pollinator in your backyard. But percentage of these are all going to, let's say you have projects in your area, let's say you have two acres. All right? We're going to raise some money here from the public, and we're going to raise the money to pollinate that field. It's expensive, that seed. And that's another industry you can look at, you know, creating, you know, creating the native seeds, because there's nothing left. You have to get these, these plants back in. I mean, there's thousands of bugs out there. We don't even know what they all do. They're all dying, they're all, they're all deceased, they're gone, all right? Just like the carrier pigeon, all right? They're all, everything's being desolated, all right? So by adding this, a little bit of bee, you know, like a brick, you know, pollinate, what's my little slogan? Donate to pollinate?
Yeah.
I'm just a regular guy, right? Donate to pollinate. Buy a bee brick, all right? Percentage of this is going back, and this is not going to be my program, this is not our program, this is your program, pollinator. It's for everybody to adopt this in their own backyard, because we're all responsible. Corporations out there, you might know, all right? They all might want to sponsor a site, municipalities. You know, I don't like, you know, what, what if we didn't do anything five years from now? What's this going to look like? You know, society? I mean, I mean, you're talking from here to Ohio Valley, I mean, there is nothing left. You know, what, what's a, what's a bug going to live in a soybean field or a ditch with fragmites? You know, what are the birds going to, why is there no birds left? All right? Take a look.
Yeah, and another thing to talk about is the bee, like, a lot of people think, well, they put bird seed out, that's going to be fine for the birds. But we have a lot of biologists and botanists and things on our, behind us on this, and, you know, the, the birds, for the young, they need bugs and insects for the protein to actually make their young strong enough to survive. And the bird feed is not, it's doing probably a bit more harm than it is doing good. So anything to bring back the insects is going to just keep rollercoasting into any other animal, and, you know, we, the populations need to be strong.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. It's interesting. We'll see what we can, whether there's any way that we can incorporate some of this into our county projects. Any questions from council? Counselor Bradley.
A follow-up to your words there to Mr. Van Horn. I know you're supportive of this. What role do you see the county, I know that different municipalities have been dealing directly with you, but what role do you see for the county, or is that something that's going to take some time to look into?
And, you know, the birds for the young, they need bugs and insects for the protein to actually make their young strong enough to survive. And the bird feed is not, it's doing probably a bit more harm than it is doing good. So anything to bring back the insects is gonna just keep rollercoasting into any other animal and, you know, we, the populations need to be strong.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. It's interesting, we'll see what we can, whether there's any way that we can incorporate some of this into our county projects. Any questions from council? Counselor Bradley.
Just follow up to your words there to Mr. Van Horn. I know you're supportive of this. What role do you see the county, I know that different municipalities have been dealing directly with you, but what role do you see for the county or is that something that's going to take some time to look into?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The county's a significant property owner in the region, as people probably know. We run businesses out of roughly 50 different locations. And we own and manage almost 2,000 acres of woodlot along with our landfill sites and what have you. So if there's a way to make this work, for example, on the landfill sites in the region where we have cover and what have you there now, we'd have to work with the ministry. But that's something we're quite supportive of as staff. So we've got it on the agenda to talk about as managers and we're going to look at the properties that we do have and if there's a way to incorporate wildflowers and whatever we can do to create bee habitat, then we're quite supportive of that. If you'd like to, it's always a good reminder, but we're gonna discuss it, so.
We have a motion that we ask county staff to investigate and report back to county council on the opportunities in Lampton County, on county property.
Okay, is there a second for that? Counselor Case? Counselor Arnold had a question.
Thank you, Warden Weaver. I think it's important to note too that we have a member from St. Clair Region Conservation Authority that works with our staff and they do those types of projects on a regular basis. I know we did butterfly gardens and pollinator gardens around throughout the watershed. So maybe that'd be a good connection. And I think just for these folks, as far as fragmites, the county has a great program that we do on our county road system and also all of our municipalities at the local level do the same type of thing. So we are already out doing things. I don't want you to think that we're sitting on our hands doing absolutely nothing. And we have for years have encouraged people to put pollinator gardens in. So it's not something that we haven't been thinking about and haven't been doing, both collectively and through the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority. So I think it was important to note that.
Okay. Anyone else, questions or comment? Just to follow up on Counselor Arnold's, the Communities in Bloom program across Canada has, one of their criteria is pollinator gardens. And at Lampton Shores, we have pollinator gardens started. I don't know that we have any of the bricks or that part of it, but we have land that has been repurposed in that way. So if there's no other questions, I want to thank you for your presentation. And we do have a motion on the floor to, that we follow up and get a staff report. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no other questions to that, all in favor of that motion? That is carried, and I would say unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Item eight is minutes of council open session from November the first. Moved by Counselor McDougal, seconded Counselor Veen. Any questions on the minutes from November the first? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item nine is information reports, appointment to alternate members on the committees. I think there's a package on our desk with where you are assigned for next year. And if you have an issue with that, it explains about trying to trade with someone in the opposite committee if things don't work. So that's for information. Committee minutes. Committee AM. And I would call on the Vice Chair Arnold to present these minutes for our consideration.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, and I'd just like to present the minutes from the committee in the morning. And it's for the infrastructure and development services, public health services and cultural services that we deal with on a monthly basis.
Thank you. Item number one's correspondence. Item number two is regarding building services, report. Item three, third quarter statistics. Item four, development services work in progress. Item five, regarding truck restrictions through petroleum. Item six is planning advisory committee. Item seven, a report regarding road and bridge construction, an update. Item number eight, premature fracturing of asphalt. Public health services. Item nine's correspondence. Item 10 is information reports. Item 11 regarding tomorrow's greener schools. Item number 12 and 13 regarding fluoride varnish resolution. Culture and Service Division, item 14's information reports. 15 regarding maker space and the next steps. Item 16 and 17 are in camera, 18's open meeting, 19 is adjournment. Vice Chair Arnold.
Thank you, Warden Weaver, I move the stage minutes.
Seconded by Counselor Cook. Counselor Nopper, question? Oh, you were voting already, okay. Was I going too slow? All in favor of that? That's carried, thank you. We have the PM committee, and I'd call on Counselor McDougal.
Warden Weaver, members of county council, the afternoon committee met on the afternoon of November 15th discussing long-term care, corporate services, finance, facilities and court services and social services business, and I present to you these days minutes.
Thank you. Long-term care division, motion one, dealing with correspondence. Motion two, information reports. Corporate Service Division, item three is correspondence. Item four is regarding a letter on Bill 148. Information reports number five on affair workplaces. Item six, human resources staff complement. Item seven, amendments to procedure by law 33. Sorry. Counselor Arnold, glad you wrapped.
No problem, I know what it's like sitting there.
Trying to scan.
Warden Weaver, members of county council, I read this with great enthusiasm, excitement and wonderment, of course. But when I do read things over, in my municipality, I have a ward system. So who would I ever get to be my alternative person to come here to county council? Because I'm elected in the position of mayor. And I have council members that are elected in the position of councils. And for the 10 meetings that I have here in this chamber, I should be able to show up because I know going into the election that that's my job. It's not my council member's job who is not qualified to see holistically my entire township, necessarily, or understand the nuances that go on in the county system. That's not what they're elected to do. But we are. And so I really struggle with having some type of a person that is able to come and sit in my chair for whatever reason. I also know that we already have policies in place that if I'm going to be absent on a long-term basis, I can appeal to the warden and to county council and get that without having my seat declared vacant. When I went through 7.7 and talked about electronic participation, the person does not become a member of a quorum. So if we have over half of our people gone, how do you have a meeting legally? I also noticed that these folks that showed up and doing things electronically, they aren't able to participate in a closed session. And if they're not part of the quorum, how can they actively participate in the discussion? They shouldn't be able to. And how can they ever vote if they're not a recorded part of the quorum that meets here in this chamber? So to me, there's a bunch of things here that aren't really right. And I'm not in favor of a number of these things that are written into this procedure, of course, and then into the bylaw later, because I don't think it's right. And I think it diminishes the importance of these offices that we're elected to serve under. And it's very disrespectful to the people that put me in this chair and others. Because no one can take the place of the head of council. Much and all, they may think they can or want to try to be able to, but they don't. Because we are tasked with certain things that no one else on council can do. And when you talk to the ombudsman's office and others at different levels of government, no member of staff can respond. No member of council can respond and council collectively cannot respond. Because when the ombudsman comes calling, there's only one person they have to notify and that's the head of council. So how can I have an alternate sitting in here trying to be me? Anyways, I will ask for a recorded vote on this motion if you want to pull it out. And I would appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Any other discussion regarding that, Counselor Bradley?
I think the, Mayor Arnold's raised some really good questions. Is there another way of dealing with this, that we just go back in and discuss it further? Or is just the whole principle is not acceptable?
I don't like any.
The one question I do have is on the timing, I saw in the other report about after a month. I mean, I think all of us have had, I mean, I've had illness issues and I can't be here and others in this room have or other commitments. To me, it needs to be, if it's gonna happen, it needs to be, yeah, it needs to be a, just having a backup almost gives you a reason not to be here and maybe to miss some votes that you should be in. So I just, I'm asking, do you just want to have the recorded vote? Or do we try to find some way to massage this into something that appeals to everyone in this room?
I guess, would you like to speak to this, Stefan? If you could?
Yep, very good questions, very good policy considerations. But unfortunately, the policy considerations with respect to alternate members, there are two separate issues. One is the alternate members and then secondly, electronic participation in county council meetings. With respect to alternate members, the policy consideration really doesn't rest at the upper tier municipality. The legislation, both section 267 and 268 of the municipal legislation, municipal act, stipulates that it's a decision that's made at the local tier. And if the local tier municipality appoints an alternate member in the circumstances where an alternate member may be appointed by that local tier, we at the upper tier effectively must accept that. So it's not a policy consideration for us. But nonetheless, the greater policy consideration behind the municipal act is something that I'm sure was debated at some point in time at the province before they enacted that legislation. And of course, something that will be debated at the local tier as to whether or not you choose to appoint an alternate member. So that's a separate issue than electronic participation. Electronic participation in county council meetings and its standing committees meetings is a policy issue for you and it's not mandatory. This council can choose whether or not to allow members to participate electronically or not. The purpose of us bringing it to your attention was to bring it to your attention for you to make a decision on that point. But again, the legislation which comes into effect only on January 1st, 2018, stipulates that is permissive. So when we looked at it, again, we, either way, it's a policy consideration really for county council and not for us, we just brought the issue to your table. But when we looked at it and say, there are two things. One, it does happen that members from time to time cannot attend a meeting for whatever, transit illnesses, whatnot, this would allow them to participate in an alternative format. Secondly, in terms of the quorum participation aspect of things, that's correct, the legislation does stipulate that if somebody participates electronically, they do not count as quorum nor can they participate in a closed session. However, quorum and participation are two different things. Counselor Arnold is absolutely correct, if people are not here, and the policy of the legislation is to dictate folks to show up, but if people are not here, there's no quorum, there is no meeting. So physically not here, no quorum, no meeting. However, if the majority of council is not here, but one or two are participating electronically, then you move on because you've met the quorum. You can then, once you've crossed the threshold of quorum, that member who participates electronically can participate in the debate and vote on the issues that are before county council within the specific issues. Although they don't count for quorum, they can certainly participate outside of the in-camera sessions. So again, just to summarize, the alternate member issue is not a policy issue for the upper tier, it's a policy issue for the local tier. If the local tier chooses in whatever circumstances that are permitted under the act to appoint an alternate, we go with the flow, effectively, unfortunately. With respect to electronic participation in county council meetings, correct, that is perfectly elective, it's really up to this council to decide whether or not that's an option that will be available to folks.
Counselor Han?
Certainly, there was a lot of discussion around the electronic participation at our afternoon meeting. It wasn't, my recollection is it wasn't intended to give people an out for not being here, but it was more in extenuating circumstances for someone that might be laid up and still wanted to be able to call in. And what I remember, we had a clause in there that would say, this could be a trial. So if it was found that it wasn't working out, because it isn't the easiest to have people calling in and it's hard to, you know, you can't see the body movement and when they want to speak and whatnot. But there was a clause in there that we could revert, change the policy if it wasn't working out after a period of time.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Nopper.
I need a little clarification here, thank you, Warden Weber. So you say it's a lower tier responsibility. So what if Plimpton and Oil Springs and Brook Alvison decide we want to go and everybody else not? So can we can, it don't seem, like, can we send an alternative and the rest is just do what you want? Like, it really only affects, I think, the way I look at it, only affects like, from Plimpton on down in the list there, we only got one member here. And if I can't make it or the mayor can't make it, we lose our voice that day at county council. Whereas like St. Clair and you're in Lampton Shores and Sarnia all still have a voice that day. And I just, I welcomed it, I thought it was great. But I'm not clear now, when you say it's a lower tier, that half might support it and this half not, so what do you do then?
Good question, and just to clarify, with respect to the alternate member issue, the policy considerations behind that is really at the local tier. So it's for each municipality to decide whether or not they wish to appoint an alternate member for the councillor who cannot attend county council meetings. So ultimately, if Plimpton, Wyoming decides that it wishes to appoint an alternate for you as a mayor, then we accept that, we swear in that alternate, as long as it's done in accordance with the act. If St. Clair decides that they don't wish to appoint an alternate and somebody's absent and they're gonna just be absent from county council meeting, that's fine. It is, it's, in that sense, it's business as usual.
Counselor Bradley.
Appreciate the clarification because it really is out of our hands on that issue, correct? But I just suggested to Mayor Arnold, perhaps they could appoint Mayor Arnold to be the alternate. And I'm not being facetious. The other part of it is that is really disturbing to me is a local council that perhaps doesn't have a great relationship with their mayor could put in someone who is totally philosophically different and voting patterns different, but doesn't suddenly have an alternative. The question I have for you is, on the electronic voting, is it possible to cap the number of times a member can call in electronically so you don't get someone who says, you know, I'm gonna call in to every second meeting? Is it possible to put a cap in there that, I don't know, you can only call in twice a year or three times a term? Is that possible?
Absolutely. If county council says, look, at the end of the day, per term or per year or whatever it may be, you can choose to participate X amount of times electronically and once you've reached your cap, you've reached your cap, that's fine, that can definitely be dictated. But I think at the committee level, we were talking about the notion that, hey, look, if we, if county council proceeded with the notion of electronic participation and it saw for whatever reason that it was not manageable. and it saw, for whatever reason, that it was not manageable, not effective, then the very next month, you can put an end to that practice. So at this point in time—and that's—that's again, electronic participation, which is completely different from the alternate member issue. So it was sort of saying, hold on, there are circumstances where individuals, for whatever reason, cannot attend a singular meeting, and they wish to participate one way or another, in this case electronically. Then, assuming it's bona fide, and that's not for us as staff to comment on bona fide, it's really for head of council and council to govern itself. But if—if—if—if—if the—the policy to allow it just doesn't work out, then the next month, you can easily revoke the—the—the option. And just to clarify, Section 7 of these minutes don't deal with alternate members. There is nothing on the table right now about alternate members, because as I've said, that's not our issue. Section 7 deals about two issues, two amendments to the procedural bylaw. The first one talks about in-camera issues, which is, again, just to follow the—the municipal legislation, shouldn't be contentious. The second piece only speaks to electronic participation.
Counsel Earl Arnold?
Yes, and—and that's fine. Thank you for that explanation. However, when I look at the electronic participation, it is silent on whether or not that person gets a vote. Because when you aren't part of the quorum, you shouldn't be allowed to vote. And the other piece that I have is that if they're only there to watch, if that's all we're doing, we live stream these things all the time. We spent a fortune to do that, and they're welcome to livestream anytime they want to be able to see. I have participated at Conservation Ontario when they tried this, and they had connectivity issues with the people calling in. So they'd be partway through, then they wouldn't hear everything that went on, and then they'd be telling people to speak up. And that—it was a—not a good situation. And they did it once, and they'd never did it again, and that's three years ago, because of the logistical stuff that they couldn't make work, especially people that are away. If Mayor Napper's down in the British Virgin Islands someplace on a sailboat floating around, his connectivity isn't quite as good as it would be if he was in downtown Wyoming. And—but for me, I just struggle. Like, either you're a member or you're not. If you have an issue physically, or that you cannot attend, then there are things in place for the alternative members, is what's told to us, that the local municipality can do. But you're allowed three absences before, and that's council meetings, not—doesn't count committee meetings. So that's three months. That's a third of our meetings that we have in a year, that you're allowed to be away without asking the warden and council if it's all right. And we have had that in the past since I've sat here, that if you know that you're going to be absent, you ask, and your seat does not become vacant. It's not an automatic thing. So—but as far as participation, unless you have a reason why you can't show up from a physical point of view, and then you have that option for alternative membership already in place, it's the electronic thing that is a real bugbear for me. The other's an issue, but not like the electronic and coming in and that sort of thing. Look around the chamber. How many times have we had people that are absent? There's not that many. And if they're not here, they've made a conscious decision. But if it's easier not to be here, for whatever reason, and we're putting the mechanism in place so it's easier not to be here. And I think it's a respect for the office piece, personally. You know, unless there's a nailment of reason why a person can't, and there are provisions to be able to look after that.
Okay. So we've been asked to vote separately on Section 7? Is that—and it's asked for a recorded vote for Number 7, which is dealing with electronic participation? And it's been asked for a recorded vote. Clarify what we're voting on?
Correct. Item Number 7 addresses two amendments to the procedural bylaw. The first amendment stipulates and deals with circumstances under which you can go into camera. I don't think that's contentious today. The second element is whether or not, yes or no, you—you permit members of this council to participate electronically in your meetings. And if you agree with that proposal, that amendment, then the individual does not count for quorum, but under the legislation, they can participate in debate and vote in debate other than matters that are in camera.
Everyone clear on this? We're voting on the electronic participation part. The other part of this, Section 7, dealing with the in-camera section, we're not voting on that? That's not—
Correct.
—separate that? So it's—no, you want that all in? Motion Number 7? Would you like to split it? Or can we— Okay. Counsel Bradley?
Just a clarification, that—is it correct that you don't count to the quorum, but your vote does count?
Yes.
Yeah. When—you're— In other words, if—you—if you're allowed to participate in the debate, your vote does count, correct?
There has to be enough bodies sitting in the room to make a quorum. But once the quorum has been established with bodies in the room, electronic bodies can be added and get a vote.
And that goes to the policy of that notion, which is to force people to attend, so that you do have a quorum. But if the odd individual cannot attend, they don't count for quorum. But assuming you have a quorum of physi—physical bodies here, they can participate in debate and vote on the debate.
I'm not sure that we're 100% clear on what the recorded vote is about yet, so I'm not going to call the vote until everyone's clear. Complete Number 7, if you pass Complete Number 7, if you vote in favor of this, it includes the bylaw regarding in-camera meetings, and it allows electronic participation as specified. If you vote in—against this, you're removing the electronic participation, but you're also removing a section of the procedural bylaw with respect to closed meetings. I would—Counsel Arnold?
I guess I need clarity. I'm reading pages 29, 30, and 31. Help me understand where it talks about closed meetings. That's not something to do with electronic participation? Because there's nothing in there. Unless that motion is somewhere else.
The closed meeting—the electronic participation is dealing with closed meetings as well?
Absolutely.
It's not—not eligible, so it's all under—
It's all under electronic stuff. There's nothing here that says anything different other than electronic.
There are two amendments to the—two substantive amendments to the procedural bylaw. At the bottom of page 29, section, here, Number 7, paragraph A, Roman numerate I, speaks to including those additional grounds that the municipal act allows for closing meetings to the public, to go in camera. That's it. With respect to Roman numerate double I, that is the piece where you, yes or no, whether or not you allow participation of members electronically in meetings. Within that, the legislation clearly stipulates that if you participate electronically, if it's permitted under your procedural bylaw, you cannot participate in camera.
Okay. Counsel Bradley?
Don't need to overcomplicate this, but the—the real action in this building is in the committees. Does this apply to the committees?
Yes. Okay. Voting on—I'm going to call—I'm going to ask the clerk to call—the call the vote, recorded vote? That's a no. Counsel McCharles? Counsel McGugan? Counsel Napper? Counsel Veen? Warden Weaver?
No.
Counsel Arnold? Counsel Bushy? Counsel Bradley? Counsel Broad? Counsel Brusowitz? Counsel Case? Counsel Cook? The motion fails. Counsel Hand, sorry, did I miss that? Counsel fail—or the—the motion fails. Okay. Item Number 8, service fees scheduled for 18. Item Number 9, bank of commerce. Item in finances and court services. Item 10, correspondence. Item 11, court services. Item 12, third quarter budget. Item 13, project coordinators. Social Services Division. Item 14, correspondence. Item 15, information reports. Item 16 and 17 are in camera, and 18. Item 19, adjournment. And I would call on Counsel McDougal.
Warden Weaver and members of county council, I move the adoption of this day's minutes with the item as amended.
Okay. Sure, seconder for that. Counsel Veen? Any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Items tabled from a previous meeting, do you see any other business? Counsel Bradley?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Warden had supplied county council with a motion related to an immigration initiative, and I'll move the motion, the first part. And the second motion would be to deal with, do we wish to ask Huron and Chatham Kent to participate if we move forward on this? So I'll move the first part of that motion, to ask the federal and provincial governments to look at us as a pilot project for replicating what they're doing in the Atlantic provinces with attracting newcomers and immigrants.
This is a—a motion? Do we have the wording of that? Can we—
To implement a pilot program in Lampton County, similar to the Atlantic Pilot Program, aimed at facilitating employers to retain qualified employment candidates through immigration and settlement.
And did I call the first seconder? Is there a seconder for that motion? Counsel Broad? Questions regarding that? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Counsel Bradley?
That perhaps we should ask Huron or Chatham Kent to be part of this initiative, only on the basis that they have the exact same structural problems as it relates to birth rates and growth and, you know, that. So that—it's up to county council, do you wish to do that, or do you simply want to stand alone and proceed? I'll move—I'll move the motion to consider Huron and Chatham Kent—
Did we send an invitation to Huron and Chatham Kent?
Yeah, and then we'll see if anyone else wants to do the same thing.
Is there a seconder for that? Counsel Bushy? Any questions regarding that? Counsel Arnold?
Warden Weaver, this may be just a general question in regards to this motion and the one previous, but I'm just wondering if we could get a—a report eventually from staff in regards to our unemployment stats for our own communities, like throughout Lampton County. And I know Mike had spoken about the—the folks with disabilities, what the unemployment rates are there, and also our First Nations. To see—to make sure that we're exhausting and giving those folks opportunities throughout the region as well, and what that would look like. You know, the immigration piece is one component, and I respect that motion that's been made, and—and this one as well. But I think we do have some fundamental issues with people that are already in the community that are more than adequately employable and aren't. So I'd like to understand what's going on in that initiative as well, and maybe I'm off-topic, but I'll let you decide, Mr. Warden. We—I know we have a motion on the floor, and I'm okay with it.
The motion dealing with inviting Huron and that, so let's—can we deal with that—that first? All in favor of that, including our neighboring counties? That's carried. And you'd like a—a staff report?
Yeah, I can make that a motion, Warden Weaver, that we asked staff to prepare a report in regards to unemployment rates throughout the county, including our folks with disabilities, and also our First Nations communities that are involved in Lampton County.
Second by Counsel McDougal?
And if I can add to that, Mr. Warden, is to find out what's going on in regards to those initiatives, because I know there are initiatives throughout, but I have never seen anything, a report come back to council that I remember in the last few years. So if that could be included with it as to what is happening in that regard?
Okay. Counsel McDougal?
Yes, Warden Weaver, members of county council, to what Counsel Arnold just raised, I think if we're going to have a staff report, we should also take a look at what has gone on with some of our international students who are here studying in our community. And in—in terms of their ability to secure some of their co-op employment, and actually, we hoped that many of them might want to stay on and become part of our community, but the issue is employment. And to Counsel Arnold's question, having been a part of many discussions about this over the last couple of years, bringing people to our community is one thing. Making them feel welcome and helping them settle is also a worthy purpose in terms of growing our population and strengthening our community. But it is really important to recognize that for people to stay, even those who make that commitment to come and study or to—to try out our community, success in society is connected to work. And ultimately, having an updated report so that everybody can understand that is probably a really important moving forward for our community, because we're trying to attract people, but we also need to have things for them to do. So I support this motion.
Okay. Counsel Bradley?
I don't have any difficulty supporting the motion, but I think it needs to be really clear in the staff report, there's the chronic unemployable, there's the people that are chronically on social assistance. And the status quo just isn't acceptable. If you look what they're doing in the East Coast, what they're trying to do, and I would agree with the other speakers about this, what you're trying to do is—is build through settlement services and other supports. We ran into this during the Syrian refugee issue of capacity on housing. Employment, I think, has been okay, but normally not in the skills that they need. So the worst thing we can do is bring people in and not be able to give them productive lives. But we need to be really clear, though, on what we're trying to do in this. You just take the unemployment numbers, you'd say, "Don't even touch this. Just don't touch it." But if you really need to drill down deep on what exactly—who is employable out there, the skills issue, and, you know, I have people, as soon as I raise this issue, I'm guaranteed emails, calls, exactly, you know? I understand, and I—I—I appreciate that, and I understand it. But when you ask—we ask the person, "Well, what are your skills?", and they're very limited, those skills, they're not going to be competitive anyhow. And I just close by saying that I intended to bring a much greater motion in February, and still intend to, because I think we did some really good things here on the Syrian refugees, but we lost momentum. And I think we need to go back and—and look at trying to get that sherpa, to get us—to get refugees from all around the world to be—and people who've been accepted into this country, to get them taken care of here, and at the same time, get them to stay here. The whole issue—I had an email this morning about an international student that left. Why? Transportation. Something that's an issue here all the time, right? So this is multi-complex. I'm just pleased everyone wants to take a look at the issue, and I thank everyone for that, and I think this is worth having as—as information.
Okay. Counsel McDougal, follow up?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, I—I—sorry. Just to follow up on that, I—you know, this whole business of understanding what has happened in recent time with the Syrian refugees, to understand the—in what has happened in recent time with the Syrian refugees, to understand the increasing number of students that are coming into our community to study. I think we, as civic leaders, want to sort of see what the whole experience washes out to be. I know with the Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership and the creation of a new strategic plan, for instance, that the, it looks that there's going to be an increasing focus on entrepreneurship and growing your own employment. Those are all things we need to know about, because if you come in here, whether you're a student or a newcomer to our community, getting yourself settled and having programs that may, in fact, lead you to be your own business, it's not about the chronically unemployed or underemployed. It's about making sure, as we welcome people to our community, that there is going to be a chance for a viable, productive life, a place to grow and raise a family, and to find success.
Okay. Counselor Brusowitz?
At the same time, I don't think we see the full picture here. We have problem in this province, how many great people with the great minds actually left this province? Because the business environment is not conducive to stay here. Give you example, Piotr Shulchevsky, the founder of Wish Inc., he, he is a billionaire, not even 30 years old. Graduate at University of Waterloo, he is in the United States of America. Not that he didn't like it, but the business environment we have in this province is not conducive to actually build your dream, monetize your ideas, and power of, of, of mind. That is unfortunate reality. We can ask to have a pilot project, but will those immigrants want to come here? And, and this is where the problem is. I'm fully supportive of the motion. I'm an immigrant. Mayor Bradley is an immigrant, and I, and I think we're part of here, we're part of here. But the problem is, business survival. What do we have, 360,000 regulations in this province? People look at that from outside. Canada has extremely good reputation. Everybody thinks it's a country of milk and honey. But once they come here, it's a different story. Just like that Piotr Shulchevsky, he came to Canada as an immigrant. He built a very viable business, and he departed, because this was not a place for him that he found good for developing his business. He's not here anymore. He came as an immigrant, loved the province, still loves the province, still has a family in this province, yet he departed.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion asking for a report on unemployment. All in favor of that? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Any other, other business? Seeing none, we have notice of bylaws 32, 33, and 34. One of those we have not, we have passed a motion not to proceed with, so I would ask the bylaws be presented.
Yes, it's moved by Counselor Hand, and seconded by Counselor McDougall, that bylaws 32 and 34, excluding specifically 33, as circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
Questions? All in favor of that? That's carried. Thank you.
And it's moved by Counselor McDougall, seconded by Counselor Hand, that bylaw 32 and 34, excluding specifically bylaw 33, as circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
Questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Motion to adjourn, and we will be reconvening on February the 7th with an in-camera session at 9:00 AM. And being it is the last meeting of the year, I would like to extend season's greetings to everyone, and from our house, Merry Christmas. It seems early to start doing that, but it, it has been a, a fast year sitting in this chair. It's been a great year, and we'll see you all next year. So motion to adjourn. Counselor Arnold, do you have a comment?
Just a comment, Mr. Warden. On the week of February the 7th, the Sustainability Conference is going on in Ottawa, and I don't know if that's a consideration to think about in your deliberations when you're putting your feet up, looking out the window, contemplating what you want to do next year. And I'll be attending that conference, so...
Which one is that?
It's the Sustainability Conference.
Sustainability.
Sponsored by the FCM. You know, I can livestream it. Well, if I could get in, if I could get connectivity, I could, but I don't have internet, so it doesn't work.
We'll see if we have a quorum, unless council wants to change the date. I don't know how many people are going to. Okay, I have, I have a mover and a seconder for the adjournment. All in favor of that? That's carried. And as we sing Oh Canada today, I, I have a, I've brought a, a different video. The Forest Canetto Theatre has played at, for Canada's 150, the Excelsior Band that started in 1884, played the music, the background, and they have a video. And at each of their music for this 150th anniversary of Canada, or each of their movies, they start the movie, and everyone stands and sings Oh Canada to this. So I brought this today to, just to give a little shout out to the Forest Kiwanis, and to the band that's been in existence since 1884, so Oh Canada.